Okay. Welcome to Santaquin City Council Work Session. It's Tuesday, February the 7th, one of the best days in the world.
Happy Birthday Mayor.
Five thirty PM. Roll call will dispense with roll call, everybody's here and move on. I'd like to know if someone would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mayor, I would, and I'd like to have a punctuation lesson.
Punctuation?
One nation under God is not punctuated, it's all one said together. It's not one nation pause under God, it's one nation under God. There's no punctuation there.
Please join me. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could I ask if someone would like to lead us in a, an invocation or a inspirational thought?
I will Mayor.
Thanks.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this beautiful day. We're thankful for the opportunity we have to live in this beautiful city and for the freedoms that we enjoy. We're thankful for the men and women who have fought to help keep us free and those that continue to do so. We're thankful for the many blessings we enjoy, we're thankful for the moisture that we've received this winter. Pray that we will be able to continue to receive what we need for the coming season. We pray that we'll have Thy Spirit with us, we'll be able to make good decisions, that we will know the things that will benefit everyone in our fair city, the city of Santaquin. We're thankful for all the many blessings Thou has blessed us with and we ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Just want to know, number one, are there any conflicts of interest on anything that we're gonna discuss in this, this meeting? There's no actions that'll be taken anyway. I'd like to move straight into the Orchard Days Magazine Printing. We had quite a discussion, so...
So, so Mayor, we actually have, the Conflict of Interest disclosures is actually an item on the agenda that Shannon is here to prepare to talk about. It's not just a declaration of that in a public meeting, it's in actual form. So, but we can go to Orchard Days if you wanna do that.
I'm so used to dealing with it that way, that probably you're right, I remember that from our discussion the other day.
We probably should have put it number two and then it would have been a little different.
Yeah, probably. I kept thinking that's in a funny place, but we'll just go ahead. Do you wanna do that, Shannon?
So, um, I don't, I'm sure you all had a chance to read the memo that I put out. I know that this was sent to you without any kind of description of what it was, so I put together this memo just to let you know exactly what this is. Disclosure statements are required to be signed every year and those of you that have been on the City Council have signed one that looks similar to this. This is just an updated version that Emily's been working with Legal Counsel Rich on that is just a little more specific in what potential conflicts of interest could be. So that's, that's all this is. You'll just need to go through it, just put your name in, your address, what your position is, and then just go through. Most of them are, unless you have a conflict, most of them are gonna be NAs. There's just a few different categories, instead of just one category listing any conflicts, there's just a few categories that you'll just need to go through and then list any conflicts that you have. This is something that the auditors ask for at audit time. They want to see that we have gone through this process and we've just, we've had everybody sign these disclosures. One thing I did find out while doing this is the actual state law actually says municipal officers and employees. So we are, Jason and I are gonna be working on a conflict of interest section of the employee handbook. Get that in there and our employees will be required to sign one of these disclosures as well, just listing any conflicts of interest, so. And that will help with our fraud risk analysis where it does ask for a specific conflict of interest policy and if we are having all of our disclosures signed. Any questions on that?
How soon do you need them?
I actually have them right here. If you wanna sign them tonight, I did bring my notary stamp, you guys can sign them after this meeting and we'll get it all taken care of, so. Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now to one A? Or is it two?
It's whatever you wanna call them there.
I could introduce this, but I'm gonna let you go. And if it changes from what I understand, then we'll start over again. But I think we're okay.
Very good. So yeah, as we're getting ready for this year's Orchard Days events, we've got some adjustments with sponsors and doing things maybe just a little bit differently than we've done in the past. And one of those things includes us doing the design of the magazine ourselves versus having a third party do that. And then in the past, the third party designed and printed and mailed fourteen thousand copies of the the Orchard Day Magazine to all the residents around in Santaquin and the surrounding area. That magazine usually had a shelf life of about two weeks. And so it's out a week before and then basically we've got the event for a week and then it's gone. The staff, recreation staff have recommended, and I think it's a great way to save money and be frugal, is if we were to change things up just a little bit, so we're recommending actually sending out a postcard with a QR code to all the same fourteen thousand residents and then directing them to go online, or if they want, we'll actually continue to print some copies that we would make available at our building, five hundred to a thousand copies, whether at City Hall or the Senior Center or the rec building for people who don't like to go online. We could actually save about eight thousand dollars. And that money could then be reinvested back into Orchard Days and to the events. Last year, we had an event grant through the state of Utah that let us spruce things up quite a bit with Orchard Days. We had a senior mill, we expanded, doubled Family Night in some capacity and really spruced up a lot of different of the activities. And that eight thousand savings would then just be invested right back into the Orchard Days events. So that's, that's kinda, is that what you're...
Just as a comparison, Council Mayor, the, the eight thousand dollars in savings is about half of the cost, which that cost, the previous cost for eighteen, seventeen, seventeen thousand dollars is more than double what it costs us just to print our calendars every year and mail those out. So again, for, for a one-year shelf life compared to a two-week shelf life, it's more than double the cost. So this is, this is something that is a good thing. And again, we can make hard copies available, we could even bring them to the seniors or we could bring them to your building and have some here or whatever, we need to do that way and let folks know that.
And, and you bring up a good point, that could stay online. We could put it up much earlier and when it goes online too, we have the ability to make some adjustments to it too versus the printed one. If there's something that changes or a date, we can actually go on and change that. But a lot of it's significant savings on the design portion. So, any thoughts or questions on, on that?
Just to offer to a version, I'm glad that you've included hard copies for those that don't have computer skills.
Definitely, we, we definitely wanna do that and know that that's, some people just appreciate that paper copy. We, we end up, we currently print so many copies and a lot of them end up extra at the end and we end up tossing them because we mailed them out, right? So this will really benefit both sides, so.
When will the postcards go out?
That's a good question, Shana Jo, what do you think?
Our timeline is for the postcards to go out in the first or second week of Jan-, uh, July. And it's, we've kinda worked it through so that we feel like with the lack of not printing, we don't have to wait for them to get printed to send the postcard, all the magazines get printed, to send out the postcards. So we feel like we're gonna be able to get some things out a little bit sooner too.
Okay. Will that be about the same timeline as it's available online?
Yeah.
So there won't be a big difference between when it's available online and when someone receives the postcard?
I feel...
It'll be about the same.
When we send it for print, it's pretty much ready to go online. So when we send those postcards out, I feel like the postcards could be ready to go before we even print the magazine. Does that make sense?
Yes.
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 So like, we're able to do the postcards ahead of time and get those out, then the magazines, we can, when we send them to print, it's, it should be live. Another, another great thing about it being live is anybody who sponsors and has an ad in the magazine, is it automatically links it directly to their website. We can actually do links, so if they have coupons or something, they're doing special for Orchard Days.
It can hyperlink, okay. That'll be nice. I, I, um, I think it would probably be a good idea to make sure that it is available online before someone receives the postcard.
Oh definitely.
Because that was, that was some confusion with the app, which is fantastic, but I got the email and I downloaded the app before it was, or I went to try to download it before it was actually live. And so I was thinking it was malfunctioning and I emailed John saying, I'm following the directions and I...
We had a sick employee that was gonna do the upload and it took us till the next Monday versus the Friday, so yeah.
Which, which is just a circumstantial, I just, I, I just could see how that could create some confusion and you guys would be getting a lot of phone calls or emails about, you know, the code isn't working or whatever, right? So I would just make sure that it's available online before anyone receives a postcard.
Right.
But I like the idea of this, I hope that it's successful and people actually use the QR code so that we see at, at least consistent numbers in attendance. I think that'll be good.
You bet. Other questions or thoughts?
Yeah, um, so I, because I use a P O box for mailing, I know in the past I've had, I get a lot of, I work complaints, but a lot of the people that have P O boxes don't get that mailing because obviously the city has the, the street address, but their mailing address is at the post office. So a lot of the people at the post office don't get the, any of that stuff. So I was wondering if we could figure out a way to mail that out.
Yeah, we've, we've talked with the Daily Herald, so we've used a different vendor in the past. The Daily Herald is who we're gonna be going with to do the printing and the mailing and they said there is no reason why that should not work. And they were gonna do everything in their power to make sure that that doesn't happen again. I know that's been a problem the last two years, making sure that people get that.
It got corrected with the calendars, I got a calendar in my post office box this year.
That's what I was gonna indicate, we've actually made special arrangements with the post office. We actually just deliver a bulk to them and they make sure that it gets in every box rather than having to address it and that kinda thing. We just deliver it to them, it's the same thing with the calendar, so we, we hope, the theory is that we've overcome that problem, but it seems like that it worked at least with the calendar. We'll do the same thing with the mailer, the postcards, to make sure we have that coverage as well.
With these types of things, a lot of people will get the postcard, they'll think it's a great idea and then forget where they put the card, forget to go look. Is there a way we could do, and maybe this needs to come through the businesses, some kind of incentive for our residents to go on and, you know, maybe a business offers a dollar off on a meal or, I, I don't know, I think they do that anyway, but if they, if there was some incentive and maybe we do it, you know, maybe we give a fifty cents off on a ticket or, I don't know, something so that they, they can see, hey, there's an incentive for me to open this up and go look through the magazine. Cause I love the idea and I think businesses are gonna get more use out of this than the paper magazine because like you said, you get the magazine and after it's over, you throw it away, but that's gonna be on there forever.
So we can also put that on our website as well, we'll actually have the QR code available on our website so that we can do that. And then the nice thing about the app, correct me if I'm wrong, is that they have analytics. We can tell how many have downloaded it, how many have used those coupons, we can, we can do all of that stuff, I believe, through the app.
Well, and that's probably an update that we need to make and, and thank you. That's definitely something we can do. I don't know if, I don't think we've reported since we've developed the app because it kind of was kicked off in December. The analytics are coming, in fact, we're gonna get an updated number in a meeting this Thursday, but in December, we had two hundred and fifty people go to the App Store and it's a Santaquin Community Services app, so it shows the Santaquin logo, you can actually just download it for free to your phone, awesome, just like that. And you pick the different areas and so, yeah, we're gonna be able to see that way analytics, but I love the idea of, you know, we've got sponsors that give certain things, it'd be great to be able to track, maybe some incentives also to boost the app. We're, we're really trying to push everyone that feels comfortable with that technology so we don't have to keep designing, we used to do activity guides and in, in sometimes we would print those and email them and, and people lose stuff, if it's on their phone and it's right here, so that app can go directly, whether it's, we, we link from here to it or the postcard to the, either way, they're gonna be able to get that information.
Yeah, since, since it came, since it went live, I've, I've looked at it frequently and, and I love it. So Hattie did such a good job with that and I'm really excited about it. And I think what Lynn is asking about is connected to what you, Shana Jo, were saying about the hyperlinks to businesses. So maybe if a line was to be put on the postcard that said access to, to business coupons or great deals during Orchard Days Week or...
And our sponsors.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So in, and that is also something, I've had a couple of them reach out already saying, are we doing ad onlys, cause we do get sponsors that just wanna do ad onlys. And so I've tried to explain to them, we're making this transition over into doing a QR code that they're gonna be able to be live, that I think in, listening to you guys, we probably oughta also, when we reach out to them this next week, the ones that have already started sponsoring, that we make sure they understand that they can offer something in their ad that we can link back to their website.
Well, couldn't you change it at any time? I mean, they, they could say, hey, I wanna put this on my thing, you can, that's why I love this, I love, it's a great idea.
Well, I think the links would be, they send in their ads to us ahead of time and then we actually put a, a link on, over the ad and so they can update anything from their website.
Their link, they can do whatever.
Yeah, they wouldn't even have to call us.
So it actually, the whole process will help the sponsors, you know, longer shelf life, it could literally stay on for the whole year till the next event. As neither, so. We wanna thank Shana Jo for her team really digging deep and, and selling the sponsorships. They're already, they've been out since the first week of January, starting to, to sell not only community events but Orchard Days and just looking for ways to save money and enhance the event, so thank you, Shana Jo, appreciate it.
Awesome.
It's a good idea.
One more thing I'd like to see is when you guys put your signs up out on your normal signs, probably wouldn't hurt to put one referencing to the, the code, to, to the code, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, the big banners.
Yeah, put a banner that says, you know, look at your...
Or put the QR code on it.
Or put the code on it and then say...
Where's Rod at? But I see what you're saying is, watch, watch for it then.
Watch for it.
But again, the QR code can certainly be on our website, that, that's an easy place to put it and it's, the, the magazine itself can be on the website.
I'm in the newsletter.
The, the reality is they're still going to do the magazine, we're just not gonna print fourteen thousand copies, right? Eighteen thousand dollars, so it's, it, it's really a good savings and it's a good way to go.
We also have some plans to do like some yard signs during the events with the QR code, so while you're at the event, you can be like, oh, here's the magazine and pull it up again. So we plan to have that kind of out and about.
Good.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Hey, you gotta stay around.
I can sit down or I can just stand. Let me jump, jump right in, okay, perfect. Yes, so Healthy Utah kind of is, is a group that started out being called Get Healthy Utah and is kind of a collaboration of... Betsy, would you say it's, or I should say Council Member Montoya? Would you say it's, it's a group that was started by the state, kind of a state umbrella?
They partnered with Utah League of Cities and Towns to, to kind of get marketing and promotion out. And I, yes, I would say that it's also a partnership with the state as well. Those who earn the designation are announced at Utah League of Cities and Towns Conferences and, and a little vignette, I guess, if you want to say, is shown at the conference about each city who earns the designation that year. And, and I've been interested in it for years, for a long time. And then I think Mayor, the first league conference you went to, you stopped at their booth at the, at, in the...
Conference Center.
In the Conference Center, yes.
In the show area.
Yes, yes, in the vendor area, but they're not selling anything, they're not necessarily a vendor, but they have a booth there too. And so I had already been interested in it and then Mayor found out about it and, and when we first became interested in it, it just wasn't quite the right time. And with so many changes being made over the last couple of years, we just waited till the right time and John and I met a couple of weeks ago and went through, they've updated some of the requirements and the criteria. So John and I went through and we meet enough of the criteria to be able to apply. So we're thinking that this is the right time and that it would be a really great designation to have. And there is, I believe, grant money available when we have that designation. Is there, like, we can put it on grant applications and...
Yeah, I think it's just a feather in your cap. What they do is every three years, you have to kind of recertify, so to speak, and you add different components to your city that fall into these following categories. So active living, access to healthy food and mental health.
Yeah.
And so we've got different areas and I'll just briefly highlight a couple things in each one that we've noted that we are gonna pursue and a lot of them we're already doing and a couple of them we can just tweak and, and do that. Basically, we, Mayor signs a, a little letter saying, yep, we support this and it, it goes before March first for their application and then they just designate you. So the one area that we were really waiting on was the collaboration is we didn't necessarily want another committee that was meeting regularly just, just for one topic. And so what we're gonna do is propose to Healthy Utah, that we just tie it into our Community Services Board that meets quarterly and we just have a designated line item each quarter that just focuses on Healthy Utah Initiative. And then we can invite guest speakers and people from either the hospital or different organizations that are nonprofit or, uh, health and wellness, et cetera, mental health, to come be part of our meetings and then we don't have to create another committee. And so that's, that's something that's great, active living, offering free and low-cost programs for our community and we do quite a few of those. We'll be offering a lot more pickleball programs, as one example. Shana Jo's developing kind of a Family Night where all ages can come together and we've got all those courts and we'll give some, some lessons and then let people play and rotate them through. So that's one example. Finishing off our Active Transportation Plan and that's something that we've been working on, it's almost complete. Providing, promoting healthy eating and offering healthy cooking classes. We actually, Shana Jo has some cooking classes that are going on right now in our building, minus the kitchen. They just use a little different types of methods to, to teach healthy eating and so forth. The kids are having a great time and moms are usually coming with them. This, this one is one that we're gonna actually be talking about with RAP Tax Committee and also be mentioning in, in the budget retreat this weekend is establishing a community garden. We feel like that's a very low-hanging fruit, no pun intended, but that we could really accomplish that easy.
Which is also something the Youth Council has wanted to do for a couple of years and so a partnership and collaboration between the two would, would be really great.
Yes, and there's gonna be opportunities for volunteerism along those lines, people wanting to help people plant a garden or weed or maintain that. With mental health, connecting people through social connection and locations and, and we talk about Senior Center having meals weekly and offering concerts in the park where people are getting together and socializing. The other one is just our new worksite wellness plans that, that Jason Bond has helped coordinate where employees can participate in some free and stress-reducing fitness classes. And then just in general, overall strategies that we, we share is just providing access to nature. So using our new Prospect Review Park and Trailhead as access, we're providing, making it easier for people to go up the canyon, cause now there's a place to park, there's restrooms and then they can even access nature even further on the trels. So anyway, all these things are just part of that application, but we just felt like it was the right time to apply for that and that it was a good fit at this time. So any questions or thoughts on that? Okay. Thank you, Council Member Montoya, for your help with that.
Thank you.
It's coming together and we'll get that submitted by March first, so thank you.
Thanks, John.
Mayor, can I just mention one other thing while Shana Jo's here? Shana Jo, come on up here. She, I just wanna highlight two things while she's here and we'll just, we'll be brief, but she has a class right now that is super unique that she's going to right after this and then this weekend, there's an event that's kind of unique and new to our city. Wanna just highlight both of those?
Sure. So we have a volunteer that has done a couple of these, but I'm just amazed at how many people are signing up for it. But basically she takes a, a wood, a flower that looks, it's made out of wood. It's soft, so it's pliable, you can work it. And she teaches people how to dip them and create bouquets and flower arrangements. And so she's done a Thanksgiving sign and a Christmas bouquet and tonight we have a class where she's just teaching people how to make bouquets, boutonnieres, different things like that because they last a lot longer. And then this weekend, we are kicking...
How many people are signed up tonight?
Oh, we started, well, we have fourteen now. So there's fourteen people and I was like, okay, fourteen people are coming to make these flower arrangements. But they are, they are really fun, I actually did the, I did two of them and they were, they turned out really beautiful. So, um, the other thing that we are doing is this weekend, we're starting off with our Ties and Tierce Dance, which is a father, daughter, uncle, niece, grandfather, granddaughter, friend and someone's daughter, just however, whatever it is, but it is taking a, a young girl and just showing them what it's like to go to a dance and how to behave and just kind of, and we've got some fun things lined up for it. So we are allowing young girls clear down at the age of six to come and we're hoping to get some of those teenage, before their teenager type ages, tweens, is what I call them. So we're kinda hoping to get that age group out and stuff with their fathers and stuff.
How many are signed up, about eighty?
I looked today, there's about eighty, so that's about forty couples. Awesome. So it's not an expensive dance, so if you wanna take a daughter or granddaughter, it's only two dollars and fifty cents a person, so now that may not stay that way forever, but hey, it's a great way. You gotta start somewhere. Yeah, so we've got that going on this weekend and we're excited about that. Lindsay's so excited, she gets so excited about these things, so I'm really excited to have her on board, so. Thank you. Okay.
Shana Jo, you wanna, you wanna mention the adult prom?
Sure, so, um, last year, oh, I guess it wasn't you, but Keela Goudy, that you actually had the idea too, that's why I think I pointed to you. Yeah. Molly Mortensen. Yeah, Molly Mortensen with the Santaquin, Miss Santaquin. They put together an adult prom last year, they were able to do it for free with the funds that they raised and stuff. And they basically reached out and said, we don't want it to not happen again and we had some people in the community say they didn't want it to not happen again. So we have a class coming, well, we have a ballroom dance class prior to the adult prom that's gonna be happening, um, starting in March or the end of February and going through March and then at the end of March, we have the adult prom. So there's an opportunity to take a class with some ballroom instructors as well as coming and doing the adult prom. We are charging money, it's five dollars a person, which we thought was really fair. And we already have, I think, about ten couples signed up right now, but we just started advertising that, so we're excited about that too.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Very fun.
Thank you. You know, we really have a lot of good things coming this year. I did, well, maybe I'll, I'll go just a couple more. Number four, the Utah League. We're just wanting to get a count of who's, who's planning on going to that in April and are there days that you're planning or anything special? So, um, have you thought about it this year?
I will be there.
So Betsy, do we have others that wanna get to that?
Yeah. I'll plan on it.
Okay, so at this point, Mayor, you went last year, so we have four, five so far. Art, if you... Art, if you need to check or don't wanna go or whatever, that's fine, just let us know, not gonna put you on the spot.
What's the city's preference, I went last year, uh, is it repetitive, is it a good thing to be there, I don't wanna waste the funds?
This conference is for you.
Yes.
It's for elected officials to know what's going on in the state legislature, to know what's going on around the state, so.
To get training.
It's informative every time. I've already discussed it with the powers that be and, yeah, I'd like to go.
Oh, the mayor said yeah, no, I'm just kidding. Oh, everybody's in, alright.
Full conference?
Alright, yeah.
Yes.
We'll, we'll get uh, hotel reservations and conference reservations, we'll we'll have Emily work on that and then. Get you all the information on your different uh, rooms and that kinda stuff, so that's good, that's great. It it really is for you and it isn't something that we would discourage you from going at all, in fact, the spring one is probably. I don't wanna say it's better than the fall, but you've just done the, they've just gotten done with the legislative session literally four or five weeks before that. And so they come down and they tell you all the stuff that's coming down and all the things that were talked about and, and so it it really is a good conference for you.
Okay, got one we need?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the upcoming agenda items in the next meeting, especially uh, most of the things you should be well aware of. Uh, in the first um, parts. Um, especially through the consent and uh, recognition. And Colleen's not gonna be here to do the uh. One for the photo contest, is there somebody else that can take that or?
Would you like to do it or you want, you want Jason to do it?
Probably do it.
It's called delegation.
Okay, we'll figure this out. We have the two ordinances that we're gonna work on, the modern income housing, the general plan. And those were the changes that we needed to make in accordance with uh, what the state had instructed us to do in order to. Meet the requirements, so, what do you need to add?
I don't really need to add much unless you have any questions, uh, I, we we could talk about it and I could give a long. Uh, introduction, but I don't think I will unless it's needed.
Thank you.
That's because I think I made a mistake last time and said it took a long time to get to that answer, so.
So again, you recall on this, it was in the packet last time, we just missed a part of the 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 actual document itself and so now it's in there and we made the. Noticing and all the stuff that we needed to, so again, it is something that's seems repetitive, it's been here before, but. Now we're actually able to act on it, cause we've still have the information in there, so, thanks, Jason.
We good? Uh, the totlot requirements, especially with, that that's come up because of the Urquembrack.
Yeah, and I can give a a short introduction of that, cause you haven't seen this before, so, basically. Uh, we have the the proposed Urquembrack subdivision, it's now gonna be called Silver Oaks, is the name of that subdivision. They uh, they came forward and 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 based on the number of units, they would have been required to have nine totlots, six hundred square feet apiece and. And when, and and I could even bring it up if you'd like me to, but essentially, they had this plan and they had nine. Little totlots spread all over and it was just like, there's, there's gotta be a better way to to do this. Uh, I talked with them about, maybe we can try and figure out a way to to, you know, uh, work with our code to to make it so that. We can modify the 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 requirements a little bit to make it better. And so they they put together a plan of what they would like, they they have three larger totlots that are not six hundred square feet, but. You know, they're anywhere between fifteen and twenty-five hundred square feet, something, something like that. They have three of those that are spread out evenly and then they have a pickleball court and a dog park. And technically, the square footage of the the totlots that they provided is basically amounts to to eight, six hundred square feet, so really, it's. It's a, it's a great deal for the city that way, um, but in order for us to to do this with them, we have to amend our code to allow for an exception where where we can consolidate. Uh, the the totlots together and where where at the discretion of of the Planning Commission, they could. Uh, replace amenities for totlots if there's an overabundance of totlots, so that's essentially what this is, is just allows a little bit of flexibility to. Instead of having little totlots littered all over the a development, it allows a little flexibility to plan and 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 make a. A amenity package that that is is more diverse and 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 be better for the development overall.
Yeah, I I should know that it's not a lessening of the requirement, it's just a reconfiguration so that we can have different amenities rather than this strict. Nine, six hundred square foot totlots that just have real small amenities on them, so it's not a relaxation at all, I, in in my estimation. It's just a reconfiguring and giving us some flexibility and options to make the options better for a particular development.
And we had to do this because we did a couple of years ago modify some code where if you were in a thousand linear feet of a public park. There could be the option to to change a totlot amenity for another type of amenity, but with this development not being within a thousand linear feet of a park. It didn't apply, but it's still, it was something that as we went through the process, it was like, this, this is a good change that will will allow for that, again. Not trying to take away any totlots, but just trying to have the flexibility to modify amenities as needed.
Well, we have the, we have um, those options available for PUDs, right?
But this isn't.
We do.
We, I know, but I'm just saying, we already have it available for PUDs, that there's, there's that table. That the developer can choose if they get a density bonus or if they put in these things, they get a density bonus and there are lots of different options. So I think it makes sense to offer similar options um, instead of. Nine toddler.
Right.
Exactly, that's really what it is.
I, I mean, I, nothing against those, you know, as an early childhood specialist, nothing against the the little ones.
But it would help have some diversity, like Jason's saying, to be able to have different options, not just tighten this little box.
Needs of different age groups and.
Okay, any questions on that that?
Police camera agreement.
Yeah, so Mayor Council, the the resolution on the police cameras is really just a a a new agreement, we we, I was surprised the other day to learn that we've actually had. Police cameras for over twenty years now, if you can imagine that with the technology that we have, the city has had and and still has police cameras for over twenty years. Over the years, as you've read in the memo, there's different suppliers and different change of hands of suppliers and and vendors. That necessitates this change, body cameras especially are are um. They get beat up pretty good, if you can imagine somebody in a chase or somebody in a, in a, you know, potential. Type situation, that the body cameras, what we have found is they're not a lot, uh, not a lot unlike cell phones in that about two years. They start having problems, especially with battery life, battery life is something that. That just either it'll stop working in the middle of a traffic stop or a situation or whatever. This this uh, agreement allows us to be able to get a new set of cameras and the nice, one of the nice things about it is, is that that um. It, they actually have what they call a refresh, it's a five year contract, but at two and a half years, we get all new body cameras. So it it really kinda takes care of that issue that we're having, plus there is that five year warranty on them as well, so there is the the ability to. Make sure that that we have at least the longevity of the contract out of those, uh, it does apply and and will continue to apply to to um. To vehicle cameras, although we're not making the switch to vehicle cameras now, we have vehicle cameras and they will continue to to go their life. But as we continue to to replace vehicles and buy new ones, new new cameras for vehicles will be added to this. Contract as we go along, under the the terms of the agreement as well, so. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions about that, I can tell you that that as Rod indicated, there's a special fund that we use for that. I think it's the, what he refers to as the beer tax, it's the alcohol tax that that we get a certain amount from every year. That's primarily where this funding is coming from, we rolled some money over last year because we didn't use it, so this budget year, there's about forty thousand dollars sitting there. To kinda front load the contract and then the the last four years are a little lower in in price. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about this, but we would recommend the that the uh, resolution be passed.
Is Chief going to be here tonight?
He will, yes, yes ma'am.
I have another thought about police equipment that's different than this, so if he's here, maybe I'll bring it up.
Great. He'll, he'll be here for the police a- academy for the high school students, so he'll be here for here for that and and for this item as well.
Okay.
Okay, uh, lastly, we'll be going into a CDRA board, Chairman of the Board kinda thing again. And uh, what we'll be talking about is uh, an amendment to it as well as. The, the budget amendment that we'll be needing to plat- pass because we now have money that we can move around. The ability to move that comes through that amendment that we put in. We're also able to pay for the pipe and to award the the contract to put it in. We are that far along and uh, I think we are right on track, so. Any, any more than that, any questions about any of that, where we're going, okay. So be prepared, I'll probably stumble through it a couple of times and we'll get through the voting. I think that should do it, I'm not anticipating an executive council or session for anything tonight. So, good.
I just have one comment, um, a lot of the things that are starting to happen are um. Are ideas that have been discussed and that I've put forth for a long time. And I just wanna say thank you to John and Shawna Jo and to your team. Because without you, those ideas wouldn't happen. So I really, really appreciate that, all of the visual arts, the performing arts, the community events. Just are, were dreams for a long time, so thank you.
We, we have great staff.
Yes, the best.
Yes.
In every department.
Well, thank you, Betsy.
Yep.
Words well said and I think we're making a great big difference. Businesses to be announced and more to be announced, before we know it, uh, all of those meetings are continuing and uh. Just to let you know, the capital is getting used to Norm and I. Made our statement there, so, it's, it's been good and uh, it will be good going forward still, so, okay? Anything else, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting?
It's all moved.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're out of it.